She couldn't be here.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, everybody. We've got live stream up and running and we're ready for our regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Monday, November 14th, 2022. The time is now 6:03. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. What did I say?
Yeah.
I read Monday. It is Tuesday, for the record.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio-recorded and video-streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullock?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vol?
Here.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Any additions or deletions?
I think we do have one additional resolution. It's going to be 270-11-2022. It's a resolution for appointment of a member to the Environmental Commission of the City of Cape May.
I thought it was beach safety. No. Oh, I'm sorry.
It was a typo in the original one, but I did send a corrected one. But yes, it's the Environmental Commission.
Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll move.
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes. And I think we are removing the proclamation this evening, just as a minor note, but just so that the right people can be here this evening. So with that, our first item on the agenda is actually swearing in for Mr. Michael Yeager, who was successful in this election and, I have to say, did a very nice job and has done a great job as a City Council member. So congratulations. Hold until you're actually sworn in. So with us this evening is Judge Batten. Judge, thank you very much for being with us. And he will do the... Retired. Yeah. We're trying to keep you busy. Okay. Well, if you would.
I think we're fine here, aren't we? He's good, yeah. We're facing the camera and the people.
You're going to choreograph this now.
That's right. Okay.
You might want to face counsel so they actually see your lips move.
I've recorded this in advance.
Okay.
Your right hand. I made that mistake once.
Please raise your hand.
Yes.
And repeat after me. I, Michael Yeager?
I, Michael Yeager.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support?
That I will support?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of New Jersey.
And the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to Saint?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established.
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully?
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All of the duties of a Cape May City Council member?
All of the duties of a Cape May City Council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office?
And that I will not use my office?
To grant preferential treatment?
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain?
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor?
Favor.
Or advantage?
Or advantage.
Not available to the general public?
Not available to the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I need a pen.
Oh, here you go.
Thank you, Judge.
And you as well.
Thank you very much.
Judge, you can make sure to tell him when he's not doing a good job at the Wawa. We'll keep everybody in line. But to Mrs. Yeager and Ian, thank you for being here and thank you for letting Cape May borrow your husband and father for two more years. And he's done such a great job for the city. So, Mike, thank you for serving. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that and it is an honor. It's an honor that I'll never forget and I'm looking forward to the next two years and working with this council. And I know everybody are great to work with and we're going to do great things, I know. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I just do want to mention one other person in the room that was successful in the election and will be sworn in on January 1st is Maureen McDade. And congratulations, Maureen. We're looking forward to working with you as well. So, thank you. Okay. First off, are we ready for this presentation for Small Cities?
Mark's just going to call in. Do you want to do the updates first?
Yeah.
Do you want to wait until?
Perfect. Okay. So, City Manager, do you have any updates for us this evening?
Yeah, I'll be brief, Mayor. First, congratulations to all the council for your election and reelections. Veterans Day Ceremony, we had a really nice turnout. It was well-attended at the Convention Hall. We had to move it there because of the inclement weather. I want to thank Captain Warren Judd for his attendance and his very, very kind words. And we salute all our veterans. Just a quick update on some of the projects. Pittsburgh Avenue, the road restoration, including utilities paving is moving along. We're now in the third block. The restroom restoration, if you haven't seen it, please drive by and look at the Poverty Beach in Wilmington, the restroom there, how our Public Works Department has really made that look beautiful. Looks brand-new.
Very.
I know the mayor, you've been there several times and complimented the guys. Kiwanis Park, that you've been working on, that should be built and completed by spring, if all goes well with the weather, as long with... Same with the firehouse. Public address system that you've authorized will be also completed by the summer season. That'll provide ample of public addressing to the people of the beach, everything north of Convention Hall. Arches on the promenade, the footings have been dug and in preparation of the arches to be installed. Welcome Center, 27 new parking spots have been paved. They're going to be striping this week. Park Mobile sign being installed. The new lighting looks great. If you drive by there at night, that new lighting really looks really, really nice. The bollards are going to be primed and painted to match those lanterns, the same green. So that's going to be done also. Franklin Street Library to be completed by December of '23. The scaffolding that you see placed around it today is to do the pointing of the brick and securing the brick to that 95-year-old building. The mayor and I toured that today and met with the people doing the work. ADA hearing with Emily and Mark Blower that was scheduled last night at 6:00. No one showed up, nobody attended. The ongoing Lafayette Street Park... I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, there was people here last night at 6:00.
Yeah, but it wasn't for the hearing, what I understand. Is that correct, Emily?
Well, there was... I mean, there was no one here.
No one was here for the public hearing, correct?
Because, I mean, I was here, but there was no one... I don't think the person who was...
Mark was on the phone for the public hearing.
On the phone, okay.
The ongoing Lafayette Street Park and Police that's developing, the AME Church really looks great. The stained glass windows are going to be installed soon. Overall, the job is going well. As I mentioned, new firehouse, if the weather agrees with us by early spring, without any conditions of weather, like we did last year, put this back. That should be up and running. The mayor and I had a meeting today, or not today, but the last few days with the county. We're going to be plowing all the county roads when it snows this winter. We have an agreement with them. We're going to be compensated. The city will be paid back for all the time that we use our men and plows to keep the county roads clear. It only makes good sense, working together and making sure that we keep all our roads open. We have 68 20 mile-per-hour-speed limit signs are going to be... We're being prepared for installation after the first of the year, before the summer season. We'll get them all up and then we'll evaluate... The police chief will evaluate other areas if indeed there's any more signage needed. Going to have a meeting this Friday with the Harbor Masters to go over their operation. And lastly, and lastly tonight, I just want to wish the council, mayor, and my coworkers and all of our constituents a blessed and happy New Year's. Happy Thanksgiving. A little early for New Year's, but Thanksgiving. I think it's... We all have a blessing for that and I thank everybody.
Thank you. City Solicitor?
Just briefly, Mayor, we spoke last meeting. Deputy Mayor Sheehan had brought up the concern about the city's use of software and assuring that there's safety protocols in place and review those items in addition to any training or risk management that might be provided through the GIF. So I think I have an idea of how to codify that and make sure that that's maintained on an annual basis. So I'd like to get a draft over to Deputy Mayor before our next meeting. Get it to you this week and then perhaps we can have a discussion about it next meeting.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Do we have Mr. Blower ready?
Next, we have the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program application with Mark Blower on the phone. All right, Mark, you're on speaker.
Hi, Erin. How are you, buddy?
Hey, Mark.
Yes, I can hear. I'll give a quick summary of where we are with our various projects. The last two years, we've applied to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the block grant program called Small Cities. And our 2020 project is the raw water transmission main resiliency project. We applied for that during the fall of 2020. We were awarded in 2021. That project is a $400,000 grant that will help us install a dedicated 12-inch water main from well number eight to the D-SAL plant to provide greater operational flexibility in terms of raw water getting to the plant. That project is nearing its completion in terms of design with Engineering Design Associates. And Vince has noted to me that very shortly I'll get the draft bid package to send to DCA for approval. Our other project, the 2021 project, is just gone out the bid, which is the Kiwanis Park ADA Compliance Project. We all worked together the last few weeks to get permission from New Jersey State Historic Preservation and New Jersey Department of Community Affairs to bid that project. I got excellent help from Lou and from Warren with the HPC and the people at Engineering Design did splendid design and helped us support the project with answering some questions from Chippewa and Trenton. And we all did our part and instead of waiting until May to bid that project, we were able to bid it in November. And hopefully, that project at Kiwanis Community Park will be completed by Memorial Day. If we award in January, we'll be building over the winter and completing certainly in time for the summer season. So those are the status for our two existing projects, $400,000 each. Last night, we had our public hearing. Emily and I, I was present by phone, Emily was present in person. Since we had advertised the hearing for the 14th, we really couldn't do anything but have it yesterday. So no one from the public came by. I wrote the minutes. We showed that the hearing was open, the door, front door is open, but nobody from the public came. So I can use the opportunity tonight to recap the idea for this year's application. DCA opened a funding round in late October and they have a very quick turnaround. They expect application by December 7th. I spoke to Mayor Mullock and to Lou about a possible successor project to the Kiwanis Park project. And they came up with something I think is an excellent idea. In particular, since 2008, when I started working for the city, we focused on ADA compliance at the beach. Much of the work that we did were extensions from the promenade to the shore to allow people with wheelchairs or walkers better access over the sand to the water. But what I think we lack, which Mayor Mullock noted, is that we lack the ability for lateral movement along the beach, in a sense, parallel with the dune. So his suggestion was to purchase with the grant of $400,000 upwards of 2,000 beach mats, which are approximately $200 each, that you can purchase through state bid. And I imagine those would be installed seasonally to improve access along the beach, parallel to the dune, so that somebody with mobility problems, either cane or with a walker or with a wheelchair or a scooter, could move laterally along the beach instead of just from the promenade to the water. And I've suggested to Vince at Engineering Design that we do the report that we, like we've done other years, and get this application together before, between now and December 7th, and give it a try. Much of the work that we did on former projects, such as purchasing Mr. Boardwalk, was done during, using state bids. There's nothing new to this. So Mayor Mullock, if you're there, you might want to expand a little bit upon your idea, but I think it's an excellent idea and would make a good project.
I couldn't hear. Oh, okay, okay. First off, I should have explained prior to Mr. Blower jumping on, he couldn't be here this evening, unfortunately, obviously. So I think if, just to explain, maybe if people are having a little trouble hearing, the two projects that we have going right now, Mr. Blower did a wonderful job in securing the grant funding for, was the D-SAL plant, a water transmission line, which is really important between two different water servicing areas that we don't have currently. So that's going to be a great upgrade to the D-SAL plant. That will be an upgrade even to the future. This is something in the infrastructure. So even if we were to upgrade the plant itself, this would still be a very valuable piece. That was number one. Number two is, which just went out to bid, was the Kiwanis Club Park ADA Accessibility Project. So that's the bathroom and the walkway between, essentially between the tennis club and Madison Avenue. And again, Mr. Blower did a great job getting that grant. We've done, as most of you know, a lot of different ADA accessibility projects within town, a lot of which, of course, are on the beachfront around the Convention Hall. But one that Mark thought would be a really good application, which is frankly the most important part of this, is what is... What are the readers of these applications looking for? And Mark really liked the idea of wheelchairs being able to actually get on the beach itself. So if you can imagine right now, we've extended a lot of the beach access areas to go further into the beach. Now, this would be something that would run along the dune. That would be temporary, so obviously DEP would be able to approve this. But a temporary walkway that wheelchairs would be able to access on the other side of the dune. So frankly, those in wheelchairs would still be able to get a true beach experience, which I just... I've actually seen other beach towns do something similar. And Mr. Blower thought that that would be a very good application.
There is a public hearing tonight as well, Mayor, if anybody's here to ask any questions.
Erin, I couldn't hear the mayor too well, but did he have a question at the end for me?
No. Mr. Blower, should we open it up for the public portion?
We're going to open it up for public portion, if that's okay, Mark.
Sounds good. I'll stay on the line.
Anyone wishing to speak on this ADA application, please come to the microphone and state your name. Anyone? And I just reiterate that this would most likely not happen if we didn't get the grant. If we do get the grant, we'll do it. Okay? We can close the public comment? Emily, if you want to ask him for anything further?
Is there anything else you'd like to add tonight, Mark?
No, that I'm looking forward to being able to drive again after my surgery and looking forward to being at the ribbon-cutting or grand opening of Kiwanis Park this coming spring.
I don't know if Mark can hear me, but maybe he'll watch this later. He really did do a wonderful job for the city in getting the ADA Accessibility Grant for Kiwanis Club. So we're looking forward to getting another one for the beachfront. So, thank you very much.
Yes.
They are.
Mark's been an ally to the City of Cape May for many years. And he's brought a lot of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars, possibly more millions.
Millions, yeah.
And his service to the community is astounding for a person who just... You can't see who works on the phone, but, you know, he's on the phone, but his presence is easily seen, especially when it comes to ADA compliance.
And if you didn't hear, he mentioned the HPC and Chairman Copeland. You may not know this, the city, besides going before HPC, our local HPC, we also have to go for city projects going before the State Historic Preservation Office. So it's another step that we must take, which is in the DEP. And Mark really walked us through that really well to make sure that the DEP understood, hey, we really want to start this park this winter. It was kind of looking like maybe not, if they were going to hold it for a while. He really pushed it and got it done for us. All right, so with that, we'll open it up for our advisory committee update from Dennis from the MTRAC Committee. Come on up, Dennis. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Good evening. Dennis, hit your microphone.
All of you, for the past election results. MTRAC? Closer. As you well know, MTRAC's mission is revenue. And one of the first things we did when we got together two years ago was to examine all of the sources of revenue, including the mercantile licensing scheme that the city operates under. And we found that there are probably upwards of 90 different licenses and fees and registration charges, but somehow or another, this has slipped through the cracks. And we're talking here about this, the business of low-speed vehicles, which has become a Cape May institution. Now, as preface to why we want to talk about this, we view the mercantile regulations as tools for the city to make sure that businesses that operate in our town do so in a safe and legal manner and are supported by an effective implementation system, which talks about compliance and also provides support for the parking and tourism services that we provide. Enforcement is really the key. And enforcement means money that needs to be spent for that enforcement. And that money, that money means that we need revenue somewhere to find out how to fund the enforcement activities of the mercantile system. This is the genesis of practically everything we do in the committee, as you all well know. And so we found, strangely enough, that there is no... There is no... There's no opportunity within the ordinances or the mercantile codes to address the issue of low-speed vehicles and transportation services other than automobiles. So we look back in the history of our ordinances and our codes and we found that in 1997, the council passed a law prohibiting the leasing and bailing and renting of motor scooters, motorbikes, motorcycles, and within the City of Cape May for those following reasons. The council felt they presented hazards to pedestrians and vehicle traffic. They presented nuisance and distraction to the peaceful enjoyment of the residents. Keep in mind, this is 1997. And that problems generated affecting the health, safety, and welfare of both the residents and the visitors of the city. So basically, the council and the city said, we don't want this business in town. That's 1997. In 2004, they also said, we don't want the Segway business in town because the Segways, which in that 2004 were prohibited to be used on any public street or public highway. So the city's, the direction of policy and enforcement was clearly away from these personal vehicles. That's the history. Things changed in 2019. The master plan included these following issues, which recognize the fact that some... Between 1997 and 2019, things have changed and that the advent of the low-speed vehicle became more and more popular. And for a lot of reasons. The master plan clearly indicated they were vehicles regulated by the Motor Vehicle Commission and the standards for those statutes. They also thought that it was a great idea to promote the use of these things in Cape May because of the environmental impact they had. It's much cleaner and much more refreshing to use an electric vehicle anywhere in town. The whole policy of the state in terms of sustainability is moving toward electric everything, so that fits into that pattern. And then they also recommended that the city should encourage to continue rather, to promote the use of these vehicles. And we have done that. We've got parking spaces. We've got a lot of ideas that are going to be coming down the line to figure out a way to encourage people to use golf carts, low-speed vehicles in Cape May because it makes so much sense. So from 1994, we've entered now what we're calling here, the era of the low-speed vehicle. The reality is that in Cape May, it is a tourist attraction. It's part of the thing that makes Cape May interesting. It does increase the threat to public safety and the residents and the visitors, and it does put a load on the public safety resources of the city to monitor and enforce the regulations concerning the operation of these vehicles, as well as emergency services resulting from the inappropriate operation of these vehicles. So there is a municipal services impact which needs to be funded properly. This council is also contributing to the issue by lowering all the speed limits all over town. And that brings practically every highway, every road and highway south of the canal into the ambit of the low-speed vehicle. You can go all over, south of the canal, legally using a low-speed vehicle now.
Hey, Dennis, you should mention that you are an avid user of low-speed vehicles, so...
I will.
I think it's mentioned, you know, you know what you're talking about.
Yeah. But when the... If you go back a couple of slides, you'll notice that in the master plan, they passed the ordinance saying that these are allowed to be used. The city passed an ordinance saying these are allowed. That clarified the issue for me. That also made me immediately purchase one of the first low-speed vehicles. And it's... I'm waiting to replace it because it's getting old.
Do they actually go 35 miles per hour or?
I've never been in it.
Because that's...
I've never, yeah. I've never been in a 35. And the... If you get to be 22, you're getting a nosebleed.
Just to be clear, I think the 35... Just to be clear, I think the 35 is a state law.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, that is a state law.
That a 25 mile an hour low-speed vehicle can go on roads up to 35 mile an hour. I think that's what.
If there's permission from the relevant authority. They designate it, you know, that low-speed vehicles can be on that 35 mile per hour road.
Thank you.
So now that we're in the era of the low-speed vehicle, let's look at the status quo with respect to what Cape May is experiencing and what we need to do about it, in our opinion, as a committee. There's basically two kinds of low-speed vehicle operations. The ones that folks own, this is where, Shane, this is where I come in. More and more people are having, getting their own low-speed vehicles, golf carts, and using them around town. However, we have seen in the last several years a proliferation of businesses outside of the city whose customers rent these vehicles somewhere else and then either bring them or drive them, but use them in Cape May. These rented low-speed vehicle commerce stream is increasingly, they're increasingly being delivered into the city for folks who rent them for a week, or three days, or five days, or one day. And that's what that picture was in the beginning of our presentation. That was just a truck happened to take it outside of my house. That was a truckload of low-speed vehicles being delivered to customers inside of Cape May.
In a no parking zone?
Yeah, it was in a no parking zone. So what we're looking at is really with respect to revenue, which would fund, not only fund, but provide a policy base for the city going forward that would address several concerns that we've found. We're recommending that every vehicle, every vendor who sends a low-speed vehicle into the city has to register that vehicle with the city of Cape May and for a fee and an assessment, just like every other business. And that that vehicle be decal. And that they provide instructions for the safe and legal operation of the vehicle and certify that they have insurance for that vehicle, which is going to be used by someone who very well may have never driven a golf cart anywhere in town, anywhere at all. We also recommend that the operators of these commercially leased vehicles, this is the operator, not the owner, not the leaser, but the operator of the vehicle, be in possession of a lease agreement and insurance certification for the vehicle and that they be registered, obviously a registered licensed driver from any jurisdiction. We also suggest that both the renter and the owner of the operated commercially leased vehicle be subject to fines and penalties for violation of the ordinance that we're recommending you pass, you write and pass. And also, we're sensitive to the fact that people bring their own golf carts, not just in Cape May, but in West Cape May and in Cape May Point. People, as we said before, are now going to be driving carts in more and more regular bases all over the Cape Island below the canal. So anybody who lives here, who owns his own cart, who drives it around town, we'd suggest that that individual be given at no cost, except for the cost of a decal, for their vehicle that says they're a resident owner. That identifies the ownership of the vehicle. It also provides law enforcement with a quick and easy identification of whether or not that vehicle complies with our ordinance. And finally, we would suggest that any vehicle not displaying a decal basically be subject to citation similar to a parking offense. So this is not a complicated set of, some of the things we talk about as a committee are much more complicated than this, but this is not a complicated suggestion. It really, it really does a couple of things. And the impact of this, there's our, there's our truck again.
Crosswalk.
Yes, pedestrian walk. We suggest this, that every vehicle that comes into the town generate $150 for the city. A $75 registration, the parking assessment, like every other mercantile licensee has to pay, and the tourism assessment, like every other mercantile licensee has to pay.
Is that for every vehicle, or?
Every vehicle, every vehicle.
Could you go back one more time?
Yep.
I want to look at that a little bit more.
Not the residential. Not the private owners, not the private owners.
So what's the cost per vehicle are you talking about? And is it a one-time fee on the renters?
It would be a one-time fee, it'd be $150 for each vehicle. And what we found in our research was that right now there are at least eight separate vendors within a 15-mile radius of Cape May that advertise and deliver vehicles into Cape May on a regular basis. This is going to increase, not just advertise and deliver, but rent somewhere else like in West Cape May. And then the vehicle goes into the city of Cape May.
Yeah, how would that work, Dennis? If they rent, the person rents the golf cart and they're renting in West Cape May and they?
It wouldn't matter if the cart had a decal on it, it'd be legal.
So would they, if they rent a golf cart in West Cape May and they take the golf cart into Cape May, they don't require a decal?
Yes, they do.
They do require?
Yeah, any, let's go back a minute.
Dennis, can I, can I ask a question to the solicitor and maybe you know it as well?
Yeah.
Is this something that we can do? I mean, frankly, from a state licensing perspective? I mean, like, an LSV, like a car, you know, is this sticker that we can put on an LSV that would require that?
Yes, you know, some form of this could work because you're really regulating business. You're recognizing the fact that this is a commercial activity that is conducted in the city of Cape May. So making deliveries of these carts into the city of Cape May for people that are staying here, using roads, using city resources. So I think the logic of that would be just recognize it like a delivery service or any other business that operates.
I was sure that you had done that research, but I just wanted to, before we went further.
The other thing we also did was, we, before we moved any further on this, in fact, I'll tell you what happened when we did it. We went out, we reached out to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee and made this presentation to them. And they suggested, we had a larger proposal, and that would be to cover all motorbikes and those kinds of things. They suggested that that might be a problem, but it would be better to focus just on the golf carts. And they're fully supportive of that. We met with them and shared our recommendations. And it was a very cooperative arrangement with that committee as well.
But that's just for now?
Yeah, for now.
For now.
Yeah. Now, if you go back, the.
I, the one question I don't remember us answering was about the people that are renting a house here for two weeks.
Right.
And they bring their own golf cart.
That's covered up there. That's covered on the second to last part.
So they're going to?
If you're bringing your golf cart into town and it's for your exclusive personal use, then just get a decal from the city that says it's a resident owner vehicle.
So they just, they have to know that they have to get the decal.
Yes, right, oh yeah, right.
So they're paying the $2.
Whatever decal costs, probably not even a dollar, but yeah.
So Dennis, I just want clarification here. So if you have a house that you're renting and you include a golf cart, you can get that registered for free?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even though.
Yeah, but if the cart is owned.
True for registration.
If the cart is owned by the owner of the residence, yeah.
You're not operating a business or delivering golf carts.
Because that owner will have already paid a mercantile license for the renting of the property.
Just an amenity.
Yeah, so going back to that point I was making a minute ago.
So Dennis. So right now, we don't have anybody renting golf carts in Cape May?
No, no.
Okay, so I was just looking at if there was a motel that decided that we're going to give all our guests the option to rent, and that would be a business.
That would be a business, but that would be a business then. Probably addressed that a different way. That would be a business operating within Cape May, and they would need a mercantile license for that.
Right, right.
Right.
Okay.
And the other issue, the other issue which we're not addressing in this, but which is going to be a problem down the road, is that in 2019, the state of New Jersey basically loosened up all of the statutes regarding electric bicycles. And electric, there's two kinds of electric bicycles right now. One of them has a lower speed max, maximum. And those vehicles are the ones that are usually rented by people. And there's no requirement for any registration of those vehicles. There's no motor vehicle impact on them at all. So they're, they're free and clear, and they're very popular. We'll need to look further down the road at that. But for the first cut of this issue, what we're proposing is that we need, we need a mechanism to generate revenue in order to enforce, and let me go back to this next slide so that. If you took, if you took a vehicle, and I'm just extrapolating here, but there's eight vendors throughout the area, as I've said before, who are generating this business. And if, and if they each have 25 vehicles, which they probably do, that would generate a revenue of $3,700. And if you take eight vendors, that would generate about $30,000, which would go a decent way to subsidize the cost of an enforcement officer. Not fully, obviously. But more importantly, and here's the, here's the issue. We're way behind the curve on this, on this activity. And so what I think this does for you is to create a clear policy base. And this is the way Cape May believes we should regulate the use of these vehicles in our city. It gives, it gives you enforcement tools. It gives you fines and penalties. It gives you standards to apply to the operation of the vehicles. And what, especially the Bicycle and Safety Committee, the complaints about quality of life as a result of the use of golf carts throughout the city is becoming louder and louder. And finally, this is something the MTRAC is always concerned with. It's one of our primary considerations, and that is the equity issue. That if we're forcing, not forcing, but yeah, forcing businesses to comply with permitting and licensing standards, we need to do that for every business. It isn't fair to the businesses who are following our laws and our rules that businesses are not doing that. So our concern is always underlying every issue we make, and that is equity. Everybody gets a fair shake at what we're doing here. So that's our proposal. We'd like to kick this over to you. Chris, I did talk about this a little while ago. And if you could draft an ordinance which basically addresses this issue in this general way and have it ready for next summer, I think we'll be way ahead of the game.
That's great. Any questions or comments, council?
I have a couple of comments, I think. I know there's some issues over, you know, on Sunset Boulevard where the speed goes up. And I know there's issues where people upset that over the West Cape May Bridge, people are driving. You know, this is not our issue per se, but we want to encourage public safety. That's our number one goal as city council members. I think it's, I think it's a great plan.
Can I jump on that? Just, it's not legal to do that, just to say that to the public.
I'm so glad, yeah. And that's what people get upset about.
Right, right.
And so I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I just think that as part of this, we should work with the parking, or beach, beach, I'm sorry, excuse me. The Bike and Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee, because a lot of their maps could work in this scenario. What I'm thinking in my mind is, there should be, as part of this project, and I think you mentioned, that there should be a disclaimer attached to these vehicles as they're rented out in the city of Cape May necessarily. A sticker, but something maybe zip-tied to the thing in hard plastic that says, these are the roads that you might want to ride on, or you might not want to ride on, which is illegal. You know, the different nuances to the city of Cape May and the rules, you know.
Yeah.
And we have to, unfortunately, I say this over again, and that goes to our speed limit reduction. We just have to remind these people that, you know, your kid who's, you know, 14 years old is not supposed to be driving this.
Yes, yeah.
Your children should be in a car seat. You should not, your children should not be in the back of the thing in case somebody rams into the back of the vehicle. All these things should be, just, you know.
And those.
Be aware of these people who, you know, they leave their brains at home when they go on vacation.
And there's no, and that's the, that's the quality of life issue we're talking about. And there's no ambiguity in the statute about who can drive one of these things and how they have to be operated. It's not, there's no ambiguity about it. It's, the point is education. You can't put your kid in the seat of a golf cart in Cape May. You can't do it anywhere. And why should you be allowed to do it in Cape May?
Right.
But again, our original, our original interest in this issue was a revenue one because, because a business was operating outside of our ordinances. And the more we looked at it, not only was it operating outside of our ordinances, but it was creating a quality of life problem for lots of other people in town. So I think this does, this does two things at the same time. Now, let me, so I've given the football to you, but let me just cover a couple of quick issues, if you don't mind. The next slide I put up here, and this is something actually for you, just FYI at this point. But we, when we were doing the residential ordinance report that I did for you last week, last month, rather, I pulled the latest census figures out and sort of dug down as deeply into that as I could. And this is actually not connected with golf carts, but it is something that maybe we all ought to keep in mind as we plan forward. This is a 30-year analysis of the population trends of Cape May. And every red number is a decline. And since 1990, we've lost 21% of our population. And none of the age cohorts, except for the one I am in, thank you. I worked my way across that chart, and now I'm in the bottom one there. And there was also, and also I think, I think I came to a, an understanding of something that had confused me then, and that was the initial reports of the serious decline in population in Cape May that we heard about about a year ago when the first numbers came out. But that number apparently was for the purposes of legislative redistricting. So it removed anybody who was a civilian, non-institutionalized population, and that was the voting block. That really works this, this way because we've always counted the students at the Coast Guard base as, as our population. And that's why we say there's actually 34, 46 population. But for the purposes of redistricting, we have 27,06. But still in all, the trend is clear, this demographic trend is not going away. It's, it's the thing that we're going to fight in a lot of different ways. And I offered it to you, just so you have it in the back of your hip pocket as you move forward with other issues.
Maybe we'll have to offer golf carts to any newcomers that move to town permanently.
Or else, maybe just a golf cart permit.
Yeah, right, right.
You can park anywhere for free. Now, let me just pass that around to you as well. And I'm sorry, but I got two more issues. I just want to throw one on the table for you. One of the first recommendations we made to you folks was to pick the budget apart and put the revenue for services, to fund services, on the user utility fees. And you've done that. The budget is, is developing a much closer relationship with the revenue and the use of that revenue with respect to utilities. This is a proposal that basically came from that. And what we're suggesting here, and we talked, Neil met with us last week. And what we're suggesting is that going forward, as a revenue planning tool, that we comply with the state law regarding the format of budgets, but that we become more and more sensitive to a more broadly-based analysis of what we're spending and how we're spending it. And this, this two-page chart, two-page summary, gives you a very brief example of what that means. Every program service has costs that are spread all over the budget. And unless you folks and Mike and the CFO pull these things together and make them a comprehensive analysis of costs, we'll always be missing accurate revenue estimates. Because we won't be realizing that what service costs in personnel is only 50% of the cost, of the real cost, and we have to find out where that cost is. Now, that's particularly important because going forward, you've assigned MTRAC the task of looking at the shared service agreements with the other communities regarding police services. And I just found out today, with some folks I was talking to. And I just found out today, with some folks I was talking to up at the state, I just found that in the budget coming up from the governor this year, they're going to be increasing grants for any municipality that wants to explore shared services in a deeper and more comprehensive way. There's going to be, and in particular, there's two kinds, apparently. There's one for the service support, but there's also one for the planning of that. And since you gave us the task to do that-
Are you trying to be paid for your planning? Is that what you're-
No. We may suggest that you hire somebody who can really plan. But the point is, if we jump on that, we may be able to secure a couple of those grants. They've doubled the cost of the grants to $400,000.
That's great.
But we need to, we need to look into that and see whether we can access some of that. That's going to be coming up in the budget. It's not yet announced.
Would you be willing, then, to look at suggestions for furthering our shared services?
Yes, absolutely. And that's the whole-
That would be something we'd all be interested in hearing.
That's the whole thrust of it.
And a lot of that, if I may interrupt, if you look at our one resolution, it talks about the best practices checklist.
Yes.
I saw a lot of that really went into a lot of shared services.
Yeah.
Where you're generating points within that area as well.
I looked at the same thing. I saw the, I saw it before. Yeah, you're right. Yep, yeah. It all fits together. And then the-
And I just want to say one thing about the shared services, though. It has to be beneficial to the citizens of Cape May.
Sure.
No question about it.
And that we can't be subsidizing somebody else's-
Well, it has to have two aspects to it. Number one, the services will not be diminished. And number two, the costs could be contained. And that's really the reason why you have to do it. You can't do it for one or the other. You have to do it for both. And that's, and that going forward, a planning grant may be able to help us do that pretty nicely. And then finally, the last issue, I talked to Airbnb today, and Airbnb is totally impressed with the way you folks handled the residential rental and the transient rental marketplace. They're very impressed with that. So much so that what they're going to be doing soon is they're going to reconfigure their presentation. They're going to make a Cape May City site just for Cape May City, which really is going to be helpful for them, but also helpful to us, because it answers, it helps us answer the question, who's doing what? And how many rentals are there? So we'll be able to access, with their help, the number of actual Airbnbs. Now, the other services should catch on and do this too, but Airbnbs within Cape May. And then we can cross-reference that to our mercantile license rolls, and I think we're that much further down the line in enforcement.
That's huge, Dennis. Just, and like this presentation, whether you agree with everything on it, or fees, or the numbers, or just, you do, the M-Track committee has done such a nice job laying out these presentations and presenting, I think, a really nice idea to city councils, so.
Well, that's good. I'm glad you like it. Our motto is, "We'll fill the trough with water." You don't need to hear the rest.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
Can I, I just want to, one thing while, so they're going to start drawing up an ordinance to match what you propose here. You know, my only, there's never been anything said about, we're expecting that the people that have the businesses are going to be giving the renter, rental people, people that are renting, instructions on the safe use of the vehicle.
Yeah.
We've done this with, you know, the bike shops in town, too. We've requested that they give documentation to people that are renting on what's appropriate in town, et cetera. Can we draft something, can we have documentation that we prepare so that it's uniform between every single LSV rental facility and every bike shop rental?
Yeah, like a fact sheet, like a fact sheet.
Yeah, I mean, they should all say the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that's great. That's actually the thing we're, that's the other thing I wanted to tell you. We are working on that letter that you directed us to write. We'll have that for you at your next meeting, to all of the property taxpayers on the residential one. But that's the kind of thing you're talking about, Mike, a standard message, no matter who it goes to, a standard message on rules and regulations. And I'll be-
To add to that, the answer is definitely yes, and the City of Cape May would far from be the last municipality to do something like that. There's examples in other codes where they have, you know, their notice to renters that, you know, what roads they want to go on, that type of thing. Some towns actually provide a map, you know, for where you want these things to go. So there's many options and ways to lay that out, especially in a code division.
Great. And probably a big sign on the bridge going out of West Cape May that there's no golf carts.
Well, and this is going to be-
I don't think they'll pay attention, but I'm-
Hopefully, this is going to be an issue that puts Cape May, once again, in the lead, as the lead dog on this. Because we've all seen that since you did the residential rental piece, the occupancy tax piece, there's towns all around us that's thinking, "Well, that's a damn good idea."
Yes, they have. The reality is, too, businesses, wherever they are, because of state law, are now going to be required to provide proof of insurance as part of mercantile license applications. That's something the state did. We adopted it just to make sure that it was codified here. But the reality is, if you're, the golf cart businesses are servicing West Cape May, Cape May, Cape May Point, and anything that the City of Cape May does about this, I think West Cape May and Cape May Point would have an interest in seeing the way that we handled it, because it's probably going to impact everybody similarly.
Yeah. And my final point, the guy from Airbnb mentioned that he uses Cape May, talks to other towns, he uses Cape May as an example of how you should do this, so.
That's awesome.
I think we're fine.
Great work. Well, thank you very much, Dennis.
Great, Dennis, thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Another presentation.
Emily, we have an ordinance for introduction?
No, presentation by the parking committees.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even see it. Sorry about that. Next on the agenda, we have the Municipal Parking Advisory Committee. If you want to come on up and join us here.
Do you feel comfortable just doing it on here? So I'll set it up for you, and you just have to click through each slide as you're ready. I'll set it up.
With the arrow?
Bonnie, welcome. Thank you very much for being here.
So I'll just start from the beginning.
Thank you, Frank.
And just hit each arrow as ready to go, okay?
Okay.
Dennis, you didn't spit on it.
Hello.
Bonnie Castles. I feel like I should say 914 Columbia Avenue, because that's usually what I do when I come to the microphone. Parking Committee was resurrected again with Deputy Mayor Sheehan as our liaison. And what I'm presenting today, tonight, is something that we looked at several years ago, but it is probably even more important now, because Jackson Street is a vital part of our city. And we're talking about the block between Carpenter Lane and Beach Avenue. It's an historical street. It has two major hotels and restaurants. It has single-family homes, multiple family homes, condos. They're all potentials for rentals. Also has a gourmet hot dog stand. And we would like to include it in the transportation plan when we get that finalized, because of the volume of people that either visit or work on that block. It generates a lot of traffic, and that traffic is not always smooth. These are our committee members. Dave, Mark, and Tim are actually here tonight, along with, obviously, Stacy and I. This is just some background of our committee. It was formed back in 2018. We made some initial recommendations that were presented to city council. One of those recommendations was for a limited traffic study on Jackson Street. And then we decided, you know what, we probably don't need a formal study. We are all smart enough to kind of try and figure this out, besides, traffic studies are expensive and they take time. And this targets the issues on Jackson Street to promote the success of a comprehensive transportation system. The committee is convinced that the successful creation and operation of such a system will depend on increasing the traffic flow on streets like Jackson Street. I don't know if any of you have tried to take your car down Jackson Street in the height of the season, and it's rare that you can actually do that in one fell swoop without getting stopped. And I myself have actually witnessed people going the wrong way on that street, not only on bikes, but in cars, which definitely makes a, and I don't, we're not talking about that in this presentation. We're asking that all parking, standing, loading, unloading related activities should occur solely on the west side of the street. This includes any valet parking functions. A marked crosswalk could be established from any valet parking zone. We would like to see an increase in the volume of loading and unloading space by converting eight spaces to daytime loading zones and evening metered zones. And the time could be flexible, you know, whether the evening started at five, four, five, whatever, but the, usually the check-ins for the hotels, anyway, occur early afternoon. Deliveries usually occur earlier in the day. Workmen, you know, because the loading zones are used by, we have, you know, the trash haulers, the recyclers going up and down this street. You have all of the food and supplies that are needed to run these businesses are delivered on this street. You have the workmen who service the homes as well as the businesses that need to park on this street. There are a few driveways on the street, but there aren't a lot of driveways. And all loading zones should be specifically marked for a limited time, as suggested, but I don't know how you monitor that. And it would be more in terms of, not the workmen or the delivery people, but more in terms of the check-ins and the check-outs and the, you know, dropping off for the restaurants or whatever.
That's so, Bonnie, that people aren't coming up, checking in, and just walking away from their car in the middle of the street.
Exactly, exactly. Because it's got to be, you know, constant change. The next slide, and trust me, these are rough drawings of what we've looked at in, on Jackson Street. The next slide shows the current state, where the metered and loading zones are. The slide after that will show what we are recommending. And my disclaimer there that these are not necessarily to exact scale. The red lines are the driveways. And I know, and when we studied this before, some of the residents on the west side of that street were concerned, because lots of times, delivery people, et cetera, were blocking their driveways. So we clearly eliminated. There is one parking space that's 15 minutes, supposedly for check-in, check-out, whatever, but with Park Mobile, you can expand that 15 minutes to, you know, whatever. So it's not strictly limited to 15 minutes. There's currently that very large loading zone, more to the south of the street. And then there are two, there's one paid handicap spot up closer to the mall, closer to Carpenter Lane, and then there are two paid parking spots, kind of close to the gourmet hot dog stand. What we're suggesting is to make an additional loading zone. And the placement of the one to the south, we were suggesting moving the two paid spots closer to Beach Drive and then putting a loading zone. But you could also put the, leave the paid spots where they are and move the loading zone closer to the corner of Beach Drive, because it could be used for people delivering to the businesses on Beach Drive, too, because that becomes a cluster of vehicles trying to, that wind up on Beach Drive, which then makes traffic flow on Beach Drive a disaster.
Bonnie, I think they're right around the corner on Beach Drive, there's another loading zone.
Yeah, but they need more. Yeah. They need more. But the yellow spots up further towards Carpenter Lane are primarily for the drop-off, check-in, whatever. It could be used for the valet, you know, if they had multiple vehicles stacked, by both of the hotels. And the Virginia Hotel, actually, and the restaurant actually use, they valet their diners, too. The Mad Batter valets, they're, well, they assist their people that are staying to park at Bank Street Lot, so they shuttle them back and forth. And again, I mentioned, you know, making those loading zones metered areas in the evening. And then just an example of what it looks like sometimes when you're trying to drive down that street. Because it gets, not only all those delivery and work people, it also gets the trolley, it gets the buggies, and just people looking at the beautiful buildings, because it is a very historic street. And that's what we want to avoid. And the traffic is held up. I don't know if you can notice, but the, there's a white car that's parked at the valet parking spot that's blocking all that traffic. And it's not only the valet, it's also the deliveries and the trash and, you know, whatever. Thanks for looking at this again with fresh eyes.
Have you had feedback from other neighbors, such as Virginia?
They prefer, obviously, not to move it across the street. They would like it in front, but I just think it would make, you know, a whole lot of smartness. And if you put a well-marked crosswalk, you know, their concern was people walking across the street. Obviously, the traffic doesn't go real fast down that street, but-
Something has to be done. It's, you know, I would hate to take away parking. I'm glad you have a daytime, nighttime plan, but, you know, if the businesses prefer less parking, more loading, I mean, I totally get it. You know, even if having those loading zones available for those that don't know what's going on, and they pull over, whatever, you know, it gives an opportunity for people to pass through the traffic as well. You know, those are not necessarily sitting there or checking in, just, you know, just hanging out or figuring out where they want to, you know, enjoy one of Cape May's busiest breakfast restaurants in town, you know.
And the wrong-way drivers would have a place to turn around, too, in the loading zones.
Even people just dropping off their family members to-
Right.
You know, they pull off to the side, everybody can get out safely and then cross over. I think the most important thing is that people utilize the loading zones.
Yes.
Because if you don't utilize them, then we're just back to, you know, stopping the traffic going down the street.
Right.
Which is important, that they move off to the side so traffic can continue, and they can do their deliveries, and they can, or trash pickup that can be off to the side.
Right.
But I think all we all go down there, and we take a quick glance and go, "What's down there?" Before we turn.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah.
I remember the feeling of horror when I was sitting on Beach Drive at the traffic light and watched somebody make a right turn onto Jackson Street.
I saw that my whole life growing up.
And it was like-
I went one way.
It was like, "What can I do?" And you can't, there's nothing you can do.
Bonnie, is there any way, are you going to leave that with the clerk's office?
The presentation, she has it.
She does, okay. Thank you.
That's how it's on the computer.
Come on up, Mark. You have to be sworn in. I'm just kidding. I have to make sure that you're on the microphone.
My name is Mark Hawke, 19 Jackson Street, Cape May, New Jersey. I've been in Cape May since 1979, so I think I have a little history behind- I've been in Cape May since 1979, so I think I have a little history behind me. Bonnie and the rest of the group have worked very, very hard before COVID and now, and I just want to say in my $2 worth that when we voted on this two years ago, I abstained. So it wasn't proprietary saying it's all about me. I mean, it is about me, but it's about everybody on the block, and it makes sense. You know, the part I made with Bonnie and the, and the committee a few weeks ago, I was very angry about it. They said, if things don't change, then I'm going to have to be like, put valet parking on the left side because we can't survive the way it is, and it's not allowed, that's not sanctioned. But the bigger point to me is Cape May, Jackson Street is maybe the most beautiful or one of the most beautiful streets in town. And basically, the way it is now, when you attempt to go down that street and you've got the Virginia, the Mad Batter, the Tides, you've got all these places, there's a word in, you say in the Army, it's called a cluster, and I won't use the back part of the noun, but what you have here is you're not getting a good feeling of the most beautiful street with the Seven Sisters built by George Hildreth in the 1800s. You want to have a sense of movement, and look at this street, it's like going to the Chateau Latent, the Grand Concorde, they're down by the Art Museum, and you want to have easy access for people to come and enjoy it. The Mad Batter alone serves over 100,000 people a year.
Wow.
Okay? And the idea now, if you want to do, and I said to Bonnie, I will not be part of any transportation system to change the city if you don't deal with Jackson Street, because then I just think I'm, you know, I went through to sixth grades of school, elementary school for nothing, but I think then you could go down to the end of the street and you could have an unloading area for the bus, or whatever way you want to do it, so people could line up by Hot Dog Tommy's or whatever. You could have an orderly access, here comes the bus, you're not blocking Beach Drive. Beach Drive does have that one corner there that's no parking till 12:00. But I think the idea is that if you want to build something and you want to have viable traffic, and you also want to work about parking spots and different that, you have to take a town that has two of the historical buildings, landmark hotels, and the Seven Sisters, and everything else, you have one of the greatest city streets, and people go down there more than everything, because when you come to Colliers, you have to go left or right, unless you're doing a drive-through Colliers, which I don't think they'll like. So my feeling again is the whole thing, we are the linchpin, we are the king of Cape May in terms of one, when people come into town and they want to go to the beach, you want to give them a good sense. You don't want to say, oh, look, we got two garbage trucks, we got valet over here, this person's got their elderly wife, they can't get out of the car, the truck doesn't know where to go, it's, I think that's about as clear as I can be, and I've lived with this going way back.
And Mark, I also want to make a comment, too. With this parking committee, we're looking at how to move people around. And one of the routes that we are looking at, that we think is most viable, is when they leave the school, they come down Lafayette, they make a left, they come down Jackson Street to the beach, and then up in Ocean, and they make that loop. So you're getting people from the school, then go to the mall, and then they can go to the beach, and then we go right back around again. And of course, we're going to stop at the other end of the mall by Victorian Towers. That's what the concept is right now.
Right, it's, excuse me, it's brilliant, Deputy Mayor, because then, if you don't do that, by the time you say, well, I have a bus schedule, and by the time they get through Jackson Street, you might as well say we're on the next hour.
Right, yeah.
You're not talking about a fluidity here, we're talking about why, why bother? But if you have this there, and you know that you're going to have an easy access, and people say, wow, this, this Jackson Street is pretty, is pretty interesting. And then again, between all the other buildings and all the other places there, we are in the epicenter.
Right, because you're, what we're doing is, instead of the trolley being on the roads behind Carpenter's, getting stuck in that traffic, we're still letting people off the mall, but we're cutting through what's holding up the...
Right, and I believe, as I said before, at the end of the street, you could have a sign, this is where the bus comes, and then the people could wait for it, and it'll be a designated spot, and the trolley or whatever you use to have people transported, they can get on safely on the curb, and then, you know, when they make the corner, there's still a little bit of parking for trucks, but then you've got the Accretoria, you've got Georges', and you've got all these other things. It's Cape May has to, has to give up the idea that these eight or 10 parking meters are going to be the death of Cape May.
Right.
Right, because I want to go back to one of the ideas of the transportation system isn't just for people coming to Cape May where they're going to park the car. The idea of the transportation system is to allow people to leave their car in the Village Green area, hop on the trolley, so we're not taking those cars and re-putting them in the center of town, so that they can leave their cars but still get around within this transportation system, so that we're not taking all the cars and putting them in the center of town.
Any other questions or comments, counsel?
Did you, are you going to begin valet service then, on a regular basis, with this change?
Without, without being funny, that's a trump card. I don't know. I mean, honestly, I don't, we've talked about it, but really, as it is now, the whole way the street is, is disingenuous, that's the word I'll use, because it's not, well, you're right, there's the picture. You can't get by. And to think that I want to do valet and become a bad, more of, any more of a trouble as a neighbor, I mean, but I've been very gentle and very mild for 40 years, and going back to John Bailey when he was on council, to different, you know, police officers, you know, captains, and said, this is a problem. 1918, you can look it up, or 1916, my, I forget, I was only born like 1914, the Cape May Star and Wave says right on the front, parking problem in Cape May. So it's not like this just happened, it's been there, and I think the point that really gets me going is that Bonnie and everybody else, we work really hard, and it was great that Stacy came up on to, from, from that side, to see it from there, that this is not, you know, I mean, I could get a little bit more money for pay, and so would Bonnie would like some more money, but the idea is that, you know, this is not just something that we thought about today. And again, with the master plan, as you say, for moving people around, it's, it's a no-brainer.
I just want to point out, I didn't see until just now, because I'm not wearing my glasses, but the reason the trolley is stopped is that white car on the left, which is at the valet parking.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I'm a little slow with this, but that's...
And if you wanted to...
That's the problem.
You want to go even further, I can get us, my sister-in-law was hit by the trolley one time because the trolley tried to get through, with the 15-minute parking zone is right across the Virginia, and they had that, and I think it's still got a big wreck on it. So I mean, it's not, it's, it should, this street should show the magnificence of what Cape May is.
Thank, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to comment that I just think, Mark Hokowitz, I just want to thank you publicly for all you do for the veterans in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, very much. Bonnie, thank you. All the members of the parking committee, thank you very much for your help to the community. Okay, on to ordinances for introduction.
Yes, we have 486-2022, an ordinance of the City of Cape May amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Vehicles and Traffic, to prohibit exhibition driving within the City of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I think, obviously, we all know what this is coming from, this, or maybe it's not obvious, but this is really in reaction to the events that occurred in Wildwood in regards to the H2OI issue. I attended a meeting with other, at the county, with other mayors and city managers and our police force. And I should say right now, I thank Chief Fashall, who, we've received many thanks from Wildwood and North Wildwood for you and, and obviously, the department's service that evening. But to update the public in the City of Cape May, really, what they were looking at is what Ocean City, Maryland did to frankly get rid of the H2OI, because obviously, they left Ocean City, Maryland, and went to Wildwood, and what actions did they take? And this is basically the first example of legislation, frankly, that we're copying from Ocean City, Maryland, going to the solicitors in Cape May County, and Chris, if you want to give a little update on that.
Sure. This is just to prohibit exhibition driving, and there's a bunch of examples of that and examples of the types of driving that just serves no public benefit for the City of Cape May or anybody else in Cape May County. And this is an example of something that Wildwood, almost, I think, every other community, at least on the shoreline, is considering adopting. I had a chance to speak with our police department officials, I spoke with Chief Fashall, Captain Bobic, and Lieutenant Walker, and the rest of the department got a chance to take a look at this, so that it was not just copy and paste, but tailored to our community to best kind of provide a defense and give the police department the tools to write tickets or take other action if anything was coming this way. So that's, that's what this is. I just wanted to point out that it was tailored to Cape May and get, did get the input of our police department.
Chris, was there nothing on the books in New Jersey for, before this?
So there, there is much broader motor vehicle code provisions in Title 39, careless driving, reckless driving, but this is so much more specific to that and just tailored to, just to give you examples, like, we don't need anybody doing donuts on the streets and, or screeching wheels or tires.
But wasn't that already illegal, though, to do donuts?
Well, it's, I think, like I said, I think it would fall under the types of things that are already regulated, but this just specifically calls it out so that nobody, you know, there's no, to, to put the dividing line clearly in favor of, we don't need squealing tires, we don't need quick acceleration, especially when our roads are at the speeds that they are, it just serves no benefit, it puts people at risk. So this just specifically calls that out, and if nothing else, the officers have the ability to look to this code provision, that leaves no doubt that we don't, this isn't permitted in town.
One thing I'll point out is the authority to impound vehicles, which was one of the, one of the most important things that Ocean City, Maryland had brought up, is you can't write these folks a ticket and then say, good night. You've got to be able to impound the vehicle, and this is pretty specific about that.
That's a big hammer in this, and I don't know that other communities are doing that, but that was definitely a concern expressed by the police department, just to have that hammer in case they needed it. So that's, that's in there as well.
Chief, do you have any comments on this that you'd like to make, or?
Now, just that, I appreciate Mr. Gillen Schwartz's time in this. We were in the City of Wildwood when we were called that evening, both evenings, Friday and Saturday night, in coordination with the manager. He basically, you know, directed me to obviously be safe, take our men and our women over there. The morning after, I wrote a pretty detailed statement of how I felt and what I witnessed that evening, arriving in the City of Wildwood, seeing the carnage. You know, I've been on motor vehicle accidents in my 26, 27 years here, fatal accidents through township in here. What I saw that evening was just straight blatant ignorance of the humanity, where people came to our community. I took Wildwood as Cape May. I drove into a town that I grew up in, Wildwood, and hung out there. I took that town and said, this could be Cape May right now, on a, on a busy weekend, 4th of July weekend. Yes, we are unique and different, but I took that as, you know, I never want this to happen here. That Monday, or maybe even Sunday, I probably bugged Chris and said, please help me create this and, and just mimic, mirror whatever Wildwood's doing, we need to do it. I spoke to the mayor on the phone, I'm like, give me the permission to close the bridge, because they were coming to, you know, they literally got pushed out of Ocean City, Maryland, and they were, we were getting alerts that evening, Saturday evening, that they were coming to Cape May Point, and it just, you know, I immediately called down, spoke to the sergeant working, I said, I don't care what you do, shut the bridge, shut the road, don't let them in town. It's illegal to do so, and I was willing to take that on the chin, get in trouble for it, because it just wasn't happening here. I couldn't even imagine that type of activity here. So this ordinance and your, the council, the mayor pushing this is 100% backed by the police department, that you give us the teeth to dig into someone, the groups like this to come to our city and hurt the boroughs of the city. We won't, I, I can't have it, it just won't happen. So again, thank, thank you, Mr. Gillen Schwartz, for doing so, and it gives us the teeth. I think, Deputy Mayor, you asked about, aren't there already ordinances on the books? Yes, there are, but what this gives us is the, the extra teeth to do so, some more legroom and a little bit of towing the vehicles and getting them off the roadway. You know, my plan, if this ever happens, we will sit at both bridges, and we will ticket and tow every single vehicle that comes into the City of Cape May that doesn't, you know, I'm not trying to be prejudiced to something like that, but if you have no, if your vehicle's not in compliance and your wheels are spinned out like this, and you're just, you know, you're doing donuts before you get in town, it's not welcome to here. I have enough problems with golf carts.
And Chief, this is, this is going, but just for the public, this is going to the fact that the police knew that these vehicles were not, they were illegal, you know, they could see the things that were on, the cars that were illegal.
Correct.
So what we want to make sure you're able to do is, when you see those things, people coming into town, you get pulled over, and you have the authority to impound the vehicle if necessary, you know?
Yeah, it gives us the...
And we're not talking about random one people coming in, we're talking about these events, you know?
No, there was a similar, there was a car shown in the City of Wildwood that same day, that same weekend. It's never had a problem my entire life of gentlemen and ladies wanting to show and display their vehicles. These people came to our community and destroyed it and killed people.
Yeah.
You know, they could have killed a whole family on a golf cart, driving in the City of Wildwood, and they killed, you know, the two people that were sitting, one in a car and one walking down the street, from a separate event. So like I said, my, my cry to Chris was answered very quickly, and I appreciate the council for doing so as well.
Thank you, Chief. And then, I mean, I think this is obvious, you don't, no, no town wants to be the one who doesn't have this on the books, because it's, it's clear that the people were smart enough to look at what was happening in Ocean City and then move to another town that didn't have something on the books. So I think this is probably not the last piece of legislation that we'll see in regards to this, as we kind of follow what everyone is doing in Cape May County.
May I add something, Mayor?
Please.
Uh, this is, uh, it's great timing for me personally, last week, if, you know, I live in the north part of town, as many of you probably know, and when you get an opportunity to drive through town, sometimes you would say to yourself, I'm going to go check out the Cove, you know? So here I am, come up, you know, took a turn on Mount Vernon, made a left onto Second Avenue, and I see this Mustang, right? And you know, you make your right, and you go to your, your circle, you check out the Cove, and you come out there, and this person, I'm, I'm sitting at the stop sign at Second Avenue, is peeling out! And I honked my horn, my hands up in the air, and luckily, he, he noticed me, and I'm like, this is Cape May guy, you know? And, and I think this is a good opportunity just to say, you know, just calm it down. And I think it goes along with everything we're doing, public safety, slowing people down in Cape May, there's no reason why anybody should be peeling out. And just the other day, it must have been like 11 o'clock at night, and it was somewhere in Cape May, I hear a motorcycle just peeling out somewhere, I'm like, oh my gosh, do we really need this?
No.
And I think it's a good opportunity to really tighten this down. So, you know, thank you for bringing this to our attention, Chief, and Mrs. Gillen Schwartz, you know, this is an excellent movement and a great attraction.
I just wanted to clarify, too, based on something Chief Fashall had mentioned about closing down a bridge or closing down a road.
That's where I was coming.
The, so the city, city manager and the chief of police absolutely already have the authority to shut down or monitor a street or make an alteration there if there's a public health or safety concern. That's in the city code, we don't have to make that change. So really, the, the goal of this was to, if, if for some reason they were able to get into town or someone was acting this way, it's to nip it in the bud immediately and give the police department something to hang their hat on. So there, there's, that's just, there's the preventative portion that's already in there, and then this is to get, to make sure that conduct is directly regulated.
Can I piggyback on that a little bit more? Because the bridges are actually in Lower Township, so would we have, would, we need to have an agreement with Lower Township in order to do something like that?
I think it's very, from my perspective, and Chief Fashall can probably speak to this, I, I think it's a very easy phone call between the departments and, and coordinating that, and I, if that were a problem for Cape May, it would be a problem for them, because Skelenger Landing will be affected, and they have parking lots over there as well.
Right. It would just, if they get it over the bridge, similar to what happened in Wildwood, and they put up their bridge.
Right.
But if they, you know, do, we would have the ability to stop when they cross the city line. We couldn't stop them at the, at the bridge.
Sure.
Unless there was mutual. I mean, is there anything else that we can do for, for you, Chief?
Chief, I think...
I don't, you know, I don't know, is there anything else? Because you did say that we have our hands tied. When it comes to that, I would just have shut down the bridge.
Well, it's the Little Bridge, I think.
The Little Bridge.
The Little Bridge, right, but then you're going to wreak havoc, yeah, you're going to wreak havoc in Lower Township there as soon as you come over the bridge.
Yeah, in, in communication with Chief Lewis, Lower Township PD, we've had many meetings on it, and with the City of Wildwood, same thing, so it's really just that phone call, that quick mutually call to say, you know, we're having an issue here, because we covered Cape May Point for them when it was going towards down Sunset, because the lighthouse where they were going, because they, they put a post up on H2OI that they were coming to the lighthouse. It was a phone call between his captain and my captain, wherein it was just like, hey, you give us permission to shut down the State Park? Yes, because we didn't have the authority to do so, but with that verbal, you know, coordination there, we could have that quickly. So that's what we do, I think we already have that mutual understanding with Lower Township to do so, and to, we work very, very well together. So, yeah, I don't think you have to put anything in writing to do it, just to cover it in, in the ordinance that we're allowed to do it, as far as Skelenger Landing is concerned, with the Little Bridge. I'm more concerned with that Little Bridge... with the Little Bridge, I'm more concerned with that Little Bridge right there. We still own a little piece of that footing, so I can put a car there, I'll shut that bridge down in a heartbeat, quickly.
So we can't really do an ordinance for Skelenger's Landing, but absolutely the departments can coordinate together.
They can, okay.
Yeah, and we do well. We do well.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments on the ordinance? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
And next, we have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption, 483-2022, an ordinance amending Section 194 of the city of Cape May Code to prohibit use of generators in connection with planned construction activities in the city of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And there is a public hearing on that tonight, Mayor.
Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance, I'm sorry, 483-2022?
Sir?
Hi, I'm Kevin Hammerin, 1010 Washington Street. Just a quick comment about it. In reading the ordinance, it's possible that in the event of a, let's just say, a hurricane, you're going to have a period of time in recovery where you may not have electrical feed to a specific area, and I would hope you would allow for an exception in this, where generators could be used during the period of reconstruction, those kinds of things.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure, you know, it says planned construction, so I understand that point. That makes a little sense to me.
Right. I think the key word I took from it, and Mr. Solicitor could correct me, but the use of a generator as a permanent or primary source is prohibited.
Understood that.
The very next sentence, too, I think, addresses what your concern is, sir. Generators may only be used as emergency or standby measures in the event of a power outage. So if there's, this is to make sure that if you can get a temp pole, we don't want you to be using a generator. And if the temp pole's not available, then absolutely a generator's going to be required.
So we totally agree with that, obviously, yeah.
Any...
Reconstruction could take a long period of time.
Right.
Not be, you know, a one day or two day event. You know, plan for some kind of power outage, try to do that recovery.
His concern, just for the record, his concern is during a recovery period after a storm or hurricane, or, go ahead.
If, if there's a two-week power outage because of a storm and people need to use generators, the code enforcement officer would have to be loony to go out and write tickets for that. Because the, like I said, the, if there is, if there is another source of power, we want you to use that, but if there's not, then generators are the only option in that case. And that, that's what this allows for.
And I think we should reflect in the minutes, Emily, that to make it even more clear that this is specifically for construction. We're not dealing with an environmental disaster or anything like that. I think we all understand that, right?
Yeah.
So a question I have is because I had a particular builder I know express a whole lot of concern to me about this ordinance, and his point being is that you can't always get, you know, you can request the hookup, but you can't always get it. It can take quite a bit of time. Would we consider that an emergency situation, or if he can prove that the request has been made and...
Exactly. I think it addresses that, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, and I think the intent here is that, you know, this not be the primary source. So, and if somebody is in good faith pursuing a temp pole and it's in process, but the person just can't get out there because of their service is backed up for two weeks, well, if they're in the process of doing that, I think they're complying with the spirit of the code.
Yeah. But I think you also have to realize, you don't just go out and build a house overnight. There's a lot of planning that goes into it, permits and everything else. So to me, there has to be some kind of planning on the builders that he knows he's going to have to get it.
Absolutely.
And then he has to apply for it within a reasonable time.
Yeah.
And not just at the last minute, "Oh, I have to get a, you know, a pole."
I had someone ask about this in particular in regard to pneumatic guns, compressor, air compressor, because a lot of contractors have an air compressor with a gasoline-powered motor. That's not a generator, and they would still be able to use that under this ordinance, just to be clear. And of course, the purpose of this is peace and quiet for the neighborhood. Any contractors that are not making an attempt to get a temporary pole and are just simply using a gasoline-powered loud and frankly even smelly, we've gotten complaints from some of the residents that it's going on for months. That's what this is trying to cover.
Sir, if you, if you want to speak, just, we'll have to get you in the microphone.
A good example is if you have a house that's had a fire or something, and the power and gas are usually shut off to that site for a period of time. You know, the first objective is to button up the house, to try to, you know, enclose it, get it safe from conditions, prevent further damage from what's already occurred. So you may wind up with a generator for a period of, you know, several weeks. I just, it appeared that that was kind of, you know, we were flirting with the question of whether you were prohibited from doing that or not, and I just wanted, I thought it was important to have that clear.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If there's any need for anybody in city of Cape May to have to violate the rules because of emergency situations or personal situations, you know, that's part of the city manager's job, you know? I don't mean to give more work to the city manager, but if you're, if you're in a time of need and you needed to say, "Hey, you know, my circumstances, you know, is unusual," call, call, call the city of Cape May and just talk to us. And, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that you won't be harassed, I hate to say the word "harassed," or give a more headache than you already have. Just talk to us. We're willing to work with you.
And furthermore, if somebody truly had an emergency situation and they couldn't get power from any other source, not only would they not be violating the code, they would be conforming to the code in this case, because it allows for that. So we're, it's not a blanket, no generators ever. It's just, if you have the ability to get a temp pole, well, we want you to do that, because there's inherent noise related to construction. But if we can eliminate unnecessary noise and unnecessary intrusions, that's what this is doing. But sometimes it's necessary, if there's a power outage or some other catastrophic event.
I don't think I officially closed public comment on this. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this? No? Any other questions or comments, council?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, we have 484-2022, an ordinance amending Section 7 of the city of Cape May Code to establish a maximum speed limit on Pearl Street in the city of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? We have a public hearing on this one. Is anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 484-2022? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Any questions or comments, council?
I'm just gonna make a comment real quick for the record. I'll be voting no on this again. And again, I believe that the speed limit should be consistent throughout town, and that's at 25 miles per hour so that we can enforce that. By making all these roads all different speed limits, we're not making it consistent, and then it's going to be harder to enforce. When you have some roads at 25, some at 20, some at 15, and one at 10, no one's going to really know what the speed limit is. And that's why I felt that we should leave it at 25, make it conform to all the streets are the same, and that'll be better for enforcement.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan?
No.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 485-2022, an ordinance establishing drainage requirements for development in the city of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on 485-2022? This is the ordinance requiring drainage. Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
We did receive some comments from the planning board on this. One of the recommenda, first of all, it was reviewed for complete, for consistency with the master plan, which it was deemed consistent. But they did come back with some kind of practical comments on scope and applicability. And I did have a chance to speak with Mr. Hurlis about the board's comments, and wanted to just relay that to council for perhaps an amendment to this that might address some of those planning board comments. And I guess the principal concern that I think was expressed was, can there be, can this be tailored to certain types of development and maybe sort of minor development, wouldn't necessarily need to go to a full-blown grading plan or something like that?
Well, you know, Chris, one of the issues that I think everybody that has any construction done in their area is that these builders come in and they raise the ground level and then creates drainage issues on all the other properties. And that's what we've been seeing. And I think it's also on Cape May Avenue, backing up there. I know in my area, we have a lot of issues with that. And so I think, you know, when you start getting ground coverage and then not knowing where this water's going to run, and then it's all going on to the neighbor's property, I think there has to be some kind of recourse for these neighbors to deal with the flooding that's happening on their property, because the builder came in, built the house, and then they're gone, and there's no accountability on their part.
Sure.
The planning board did agree with this overall, right?
Yes, but with, I think, some comments of, would council consider, and, look, I'm the messenger here for this. This is your decision, your ordinance. The message was, can there be some tailoring of this? And I can give you an example of that in practice in the zoning board solicitor for the city of CIO City. We have a code provision over there similar for minor stormwater and drainage. And they have a, an applicability provision that provides, you know, you do this type of plan if it's in addition to an existing structure and/or site improvements, which increase the impervious coverage by more than 250 square feet, or construction of any new pool or accessory garage structure, which Cape May sees a lot of, or the construction of a new principal structure. So are you building a new house, demoing and building new? Well, then this would apply to you. Are you putting a new, building a garage for a car or whatever? That would apply. Are you, you want to put a pool in? This would apply. If you are doing maybe a bump out of a bedroom or something like that, but it's less than 250 square feet of addition, that's the type of point where maybe you can say as a policy matter, maybe you don't have to go for the full-blown grading and stormwater plan, because it's kind of a smaller improvement. But if you do more, more than 250 square feet of impervious coverage, well then we're recognizing you're making a substantial change to the site. We need you to go to the full-blown plan. Now, if you did something like that, and I just, that's an example of one that, you know, in a neighboring town, that they have that type of limitation. If you were to include that, to address your concern, Deputy Mayor, of, well, what about if there's a problem? Don't forget that in this code, whatever you adopt, there's always this backup public nuisance provision in there, so that even if you don't go through this rigamarole process, if you are maintaining a nuisance, if you have a condition on-site that is creating a nuisance drainage issue, the city would still, or the code enforcement officer would still have the ability to go to someone's, go to the site and say, "Look, it looks like you have a problem, have developed a problem. It doesn't matter that you didn't need to go through this process. You know, we recognize that there's a problem here and it needs to be addressed." So even if you were to do a carve-out from the full-blown process, you would still retain this ability to recognize nuisance drainage conditions if they developed or exist or maintained. So I just bring that up as food for thought, because the, currently, currently, any, any development would be covered by this. And this is sort of a new process. It puts three people through another channel. They're going to have to provide an escrow, you're going to have to get a full-blown plan for a drainage plan. So it is quite a bit. But, you know, building houses is a big deal, making additions are, can be a big deal. But I just say that as, if you were to do a carve-out, you wouldn't be the first town to do that, and you may decide as a policy matter, maybe some things are small enough that we don't need to do a full-blown plan, knowing that if there is a problem, you still have this backup nuisance condition provision in this code. So...
Do you have any, in your mind, do you have any perspective, opportunity, or thoughts about amending this ordinance?
I think the example that I just gave from CIO, I think, is, makes a lot of sense. Obviously, the towns are different, but when I spoke to Mr. Hurlis, the thing that he saw as like a gap in the code was really the garages and the pools, because people come in with those applications and they can have impact on impervious coverage.
Right.
So doing something like, you know, a small, saying that a small addition under 250 square feet, that's an arbitrary number, it's just in somebody else's code, but saying that, okay, we're going to draw the line there, that's small enough where you don't have to do this full-blown plan. If you are increasing it by more than that, then you have to do the plan. If you're doing a pool or accessory garage, then you just have to do the plan, because you're really putting something substantial on the site. And then if, a new construction is kind of an obvious thing. You're just doing a new principal structure, or you're, you're completely demoing the site, that's, that's an opportunity to improve drainage and come into compliance, so.
So if we were to amend this, it would be a substantial change, we'd have to...
Yes. And, and that's why I would say, that was the comment back, you know, they didn't make a suggestion, just kind of the question was posed, well, do we have to do it for everything? And my response is, no. You can do a carve-out, but I think the carve-out should be probably on the lower end, because pools, accessory garages, and new buildings are the type of thing that probably impact, you know, impervious coverage and drainage and those types of things. And Mr. Hurlis, I think, appeared to concur with that. So if you were to make a substantial change, I would recommend something like that. And then it would be, I would recommend you probably send it back to the planning board. Their next meeting's November 22nd, which is before our next meeting. Get some kind of final comments.
First off, this drainage ordinance, I think, is already working, because as soon as we introduced this, it stopped raining. But the, I think the carve-out makes sense, personally. I mean, I think we should define when this is triggered. I mean, that's basically what we're talking about, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, we don't want to trigger this for somebody who needs to add a step or a ramp for accessibility or something like that.
And that's just it. I think that that was a concern by the planning board. It's like, look, if I put a gazebo in my backyard, I gotta do a drainage plan. And then you can think of all sorts of ridiculous examples where you think, well, do we really want them to go out to a surveyor and get all that and have to do an escrow? But some of the bigger things are kind of obvious, the garage, the pool, the new...
Is that, is that all, like, a certain size pool for in the ground?
I would just say, cool. You could draw the line wherever you want, but currently, and that's why I used the CIO example, because it's very straightforward. So you're doing a pool, it doesn't matter if it's five by 10 or 20 by 15. If you're doing a pool, you have to do it. So that's kind of a simple scope limitation, and it makes sense, it works over there. I've seen it in practice, I see it every month. And it seems to work for them. It's a different code, but the applicability provision, I mean, is, it works.
Councilmember-elect, you have something that...
Maureen McDay, 1263 Pennsylvania Avenue, for the record. Now, not to belabor this point, I just wanted to ask, Chris, specifically on the 250 square feet, as an example, being on zoning, wouldn't it be better to look at if someone was coming for a lot coverage variance? Because 250 square feet, you know, could really take up the rest of, you know, a lot. So if there was someone who was coming before and asking for a variance associated with lot coverage, site plan, it's not all the time required. I'm going to look at Tim sometimes, like, it's not always required, but something that you could include it as if it's going over a certain percentage of lot coverage, plus 250 square feet as a cutoff, whatever it might be. Craig will know this, I'm just suggesting that not just to have it at that number, because that number is very finite, and the implications could be that the lot coverage is going to be much greater and take up more, and therefore the drainage would be a problem in a non-conforming, smaller lot, just as an example.
Part of, and part of, that's a, that's a good comment.
Good, yeah.
Thank you. Because I think part of the goal of this in the first place is to fill in the gap of the applications that don't go to the board. Because the ones that would go to the board if they're over on impervious coverage
Right.
are going to be subject to an engineer's report, and the question's going to be asked, "How are the drainage? Do you need new drainage calculations? Is stormwater correct?" And that, that will be captured by the board process. This is to fill in the gap on the ones that are by right applications
Right.
that don't, aren't subject to that process. So, and that was...
And that was kind of one of the reasons that was important when, when they don't need a variance.
Right.
What are the standards?
So to Ms. McDay's point, if somebody had to come in and said, "This, this building's great, but I need a lot coverage variance or impervious coverage variance," they're going to be subject to the review by the engineer, and they may require, you know, drainage plan and calculating for all that. So this would, I think we could also very easily add something like that, just to make that clear, that if you're, if there's a lot, variance application, that this, that would apply to those. would apply to those types of applications in addition to the ones that don't have to go to the board, we could add something like that.
My thinking is, you know, normally perfection is the enemy of progress, but when it comes to this, I think we need more feedback from the planning board. And, and that way, we have to be more comprehensive to give direction to both zoning and planning board members moving forward. I don't want, I don't want to do this, you know.
They won't be involved in this part. If it goes to them, they're going to have to have a drainage plan. This is, in case it doesn't go to them, that it's covered underneath the drainage.
Either way, I think it would be better if we reintroduced this with the recommendations.
So, can I ask one question? I think everyone understands now those, that suggested amendment. Can you, can you say that again, the example from CIO?
So the example, you would, section A of 525-91, which is in that ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So it says, "The minimum requirements for stormwater management and grading set forth in this section shall apply to all development within the city of Cape May." That's what it says now. What it, what it could say is, grading set forth in this section shall apply to development, get rid of all, to development within the city of Cape May that falls within any of the following categories. One, additions to any existing structure or site improvements which increase the impervious coverage by more than 200, 250 square feet, or you could say, or require a variance for same.
What, what do people feel about the 250 feet? Is that what we're comfortable with, or?
I think that's, I think that's high.
High?
I.
Go lower.
Yeah, because if.
200 feet or, I just.
Yeah, if you're, if you're looking at.
Let's talk about it now for an amendment.
If you're looking at a garage, like a 10 by 20.
Right.
You're 200 feet there.
Right.
Right, so I'm, I'm just, you know, looking at generally, or you're 12 by, 12 by 20.
So you're most even like a patio that's 20 by 20.
Yeah. I think 250 is, is large for some of our lots that we have in the, in the city, if they don't exceed that variance.
So 200?
Yeah.
What do you think?
Um, yeah, I, I would be better with, I think 250 was.
I think 200 covers more of what we were trying to do, I mean.
The spirit of what we were doing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And it should be any impervious, not additions, but any impervious surface area.
Right.
So a patio, like you were saying, Deputy Mayor.
Start right again. It would be any additions to any existing structure and/or site improvements which increase the impervious coverage by more than 200 feet, square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Or require, or requiring a variance for the same.
Does that make sense to everybody?
That's, that would be one applicability. So if you fall, if you need a variance for impervious coverage, well, you need to comply with this. If you're doing 200 square, more than 200 square feet of impervious coverage, changes on the site, even if you're complying, if you're going up by 200 square feet or more, you would need to do, comply with this. That would be one. And then the, the next two would be, number two, the construction of any pool or accessory garage structure, and that's not, it could be 10 by 10, it could be 20 by 20. If you're doing a garage or a pool, you would have to be complying with this plan. That would be number two. That's the way it's currently worded, if council's comments, I mean.
That makes sense to me. Let me ask, before we, should we make that amendment now as first reading and then send it to the planning board, or how to?
I think we should table it and let them get back to us.
They didn't.
Well, we'll still have to get their opinion about these new changes.
Well, that's why I said we should probably put the changes in and send it back.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion on that, council? Because we, if we can, if council agrees on the amendments to this, most, the rest of this, they did agree was consistent and, and didn't have comments on. So what we could do is just address the scope. And like I said, their next meeting is November 22nd, which is before our next meeting. We could motion to amend.
Right.
Send it to them. We could also potentially republish for second reading at the next meeting, depending on what the planning board says.
Says.
Has, says at that next meeting. So we could potentially, depending on the clerk's schedule with publishing. That would avoid Councilmember Meyer going through the whole first reading, whole, we could keep, keep it on track.
And the third one was any new construction, right?
Construction of a new principal structure would be number three. So demo, new building, or just blank, you know, vacant lot, new building, you would need a grading and stormwater plan.
So to be clear, the motion to amend would then make this first reading, is that?
You do motion to amend incorporating those changes and then introduce on first reading?
Go to the planning board and we get their comments.
Right.
Okay. Do I, well, let me just clarify too. The one change we did make is 200 square feet. Is everyone okay with that instead of 250?
Yep.
Okay.
200, 200 square feet or more of impervious coverage, or if the applicant requires a variance for that, for impervious coverage.
For a lot of coverage.
Does someone want to make that a motion to amend?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have any questions or comments about the amendment? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Motion to introduce, Mayor?
And then, just to confirm, I'm, I'm sorry, just to confirm that, including, it was three items, the, the pool, the garage, new principal structure, and then the, the 200 square feet and the variance. Those were the elements that would be the, the scope of the, the ordinance.
Mr. Meyer, you want a motion as amended?
Uh, yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So of course this would be first reading. Any other questions or comments?
Introduce as amended.
Yes. Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Mott?
Yes, and thank you to the planning board for their comments. I think they make a lot of sense.
Okay. And next we have the public portion on resolutions only. Those wishing to publicly comment, please come up to the podium and give your name and address and speak directly into the microphone.
Anyone here wishing to make any comments on the resolutions this evening? Seeing none, we can close public comment.
Is there anything anyone on council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
I just want to pull the payment of bills, 269.
Okay.
Anything else, council? Okay.
Okay. So tonight for the consent agenda, we have some reports. The tax collector report for the month of August 2022, water and sewer utility, utility report for the month of August 2022, fire incident report for the month of October 2022. For resolutions, we have 263-11-2022, a resolution adopting the state model citizen participation plan for DCA small cities program. 264-11-2022, a resolution approving the public facilities grant management plan. 265-11-2022, a resolution approving the submission of fiscal year 2023, small cities public facilities application. 266-11-2022, a resolution identifying small cities fair housing officer. 267-11-2022, resolution certifying review of the local government best practices checklist. 268-11-2022, resolution refunding overpaid second quarter property taxes. 213 Broadway, block 1023, lot 1. And did we want to add 270 to the consent agenda? 270-11-2022, resolution for appointment of a member to the environmental commission of the city of Cape May.
I'm okay with that. Is it, everyone, yes?
May I make a motion?
To adopt the consent agenda, yes.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Okay. Next we have 269-11-2022, it's a resolution for the payment of bills.
Do I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
The reason why I pulled this is so we could have a discussion. For those that aren't aware, the HVA system in Convention Hall has been bleeding us dry, I'll put it that way. There's constantly bills to fix it, there's always things breaking in it. We actually paid for a study to be done to make sure it was the right size air conditioner we had in it because it just never seems to be operating well. And I'm bringing this up because there's a, a bill in here for the HVAC, well, actually it's the heater, which is, I think, the same system for Convention Hall, for $11,000 to get it fixed. Well, two months ago, we paid $7,000 to fix something in it, and that's just within the last couple of months. I could probably pull for you other bills throughout the year that we've paid for this HVA system. I think it's about 11 years old.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's something that maybe we should be looking at on replacing it. When they did the study on the HVA system to see if it was the right size, and we paid a good amount of money for that, they said it was in, was in the, the parameters, but it was at the very end. So I think if we go back and we look at per just seeing maybe a new one in the next couple of years, or maybe sooner than that, since it's just, all we're doing is paying for these repairs constantly, that maybe look into maybe two separate air conditioners, one for the main part of the Convention Hall, and the other ones for the outer rooms.
Offices, and, yeah.
So that we're not constantly taxing that one air conditioner to run at that one temperature. We can also probably save money by having it set at different temperatures.
Definitely. I totally agree. So I think the next step really should be bidding out, looking at a new system, and at least getting estimates on what, what that's going to cost us.
And I think one of the things we have to look at too is maybe getting a warranty plan or somebody do it this, because what we've done is, we've had two different companies that we bid out for them to service this.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, they come back, oh, it's wired wrong. How could it possibly be wired wrong? You know, we, we buy the system and it's, and it's wired wrong. You know, there's, there's always components breaking down in it and everything, so I think that maybe that we should look at something like that. That way, we have the manufacturer coming in to service it, and we're not getting a third party to service the equipment.
Agreed.
I think you're right. You know, this, at this point, we've already spent enough money to buy a new one, and it's, it's just been an issue since the beginning because it's a, it's a poor manufacturer of this piece of equipment.
Well, it also is up on the roof of Convention Hall, and it's sawed air, so we might have to look at spending something that's a little bit more tolerant of sawed air, so that it can maybe last a little bit longer too. Or maybe build a structure blocking somewhat of the sawed air around it.
Maybe we'll get that parking spot out in front of Convention Hall where that van's not always parked to repair it.
Yeah, the repair van.
I mean, they, we have the glycol leak, we've had the glycol leak, the Pete Smith says they don't, air conditioners doesn't work there.
I know.
We've installed an air curtain to try to help with the air conditioning there.
Yep.
You're on it.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shan?
Yes.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
All right, next we have old business.
I have, I guess it would be considered old business. As a council, we've never approved the arches on the boardwalk, so therefore, we've never been giving a cost for the arches. And if, if I'm hearing from people, there is no cost, then we never approved the agreement with this third party to erect the arches. And I just want to say, one of the reasons why I'm asking about the arches, because I'm not for the arches, and the reason is this, the boardwalk, when you walk on the boardwalk, what do you like to look at? The moonlight and the stars. And now you're going to have lights over you that you're not going to be able to see the moon or the stars. So what's the reason for walking on the boardwalk if you're not going to look at nature and be part of nature? We have the lights on them all, if you want the overhead lights, but you don't, the boardwalk should be some solitude, you're going to be a romantic walk on the boardwalk, moonlight and stars, and now you're just going to have floodlights, you know, coming down on you. And that's my reason for being against the arches.
Okay.
But again, what's the cost of the arches?
Okay.
And what budget is it coming out of? And if we made an agreement with the fund of Cape May, what is that agreement? And what are they, what control do we have over it versus them?
Well, they're, they're paying for all of it, so that, that's, they're paying for the arches.
But we should have, we should, as a council, we should have approved that agreement so that it is put in stone what the agreement is, so that there's any problems later on. What happens if somebody gets hurt by these arches? Right? One falls down in a storm, or, I'm just saying that to cover us, there should be some kind of agreement that, that the city enters into.
Any other old business?
My other old business is, Mike, and I'm not here during the day, to see if we're keeping the workers out of the parking lot, so that the city workers can park in the parking lot.
Well, the city workers, excuse me, city workers, we have an agreement with, they can park over at the Acme Lot, so our city workers, excuse me, the employees you're talking about, or the city?
Well, well, city, the city employees, but also anybody that wants to come into City Hall should have the ability to park in the city lot and come into City Hall. The workers for the firehouse should be parking over on Lafayette Street and coming over. There's no reason for them to be taking up parking spots in our city yard.
We are, a lot of the workers that are working on the library, working over at Lafayette Street Park, behind the Dog Park, if you look at it every day, there's a lot of trucks there. There's trucks here, they're working on, there's a lot of construction going on. The city workers, our employees, can park in the Acme Lot, and they've been doing that. And there's been slots during the day where people can come and go out here, so it's not always jammed up.
Okay, because I, somebody.
But there's a lot going on, and as we talked about earlier, there's not much, so much parking.
Well, there, you know, some people with handicaps can't always park in the Acme and come over, and we have, that's why, I just want to make sure that we're.
Well, there, there is designated handicap spots out there that are being used by handicap.
Okay.
I do check it.
Okay, any other old business? New business, city solicitor?
I have anything tonight, Mayor, thank you.
City manager?
Just happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. City clerk?
None tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Baldwin?
Just a couple of quick updates. Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. The bathrooms on the, next to Convention Hall, the architect should have, as well as the mechanicals, should be done probably within the next month and a half.
That's awesome.
So we're, hopefully can, you know, look at that and go out to bid at that point. And then the library task force, which you all, thank you, charged me to do, we're looking at putting out a survey, and then we're going to investigate from there what the survey was. We were actually looking at different ideas as far as what that can be repurposed for. The survey's going to be blasted out. I think Casey has a, an email list of a lot of residents in the city, so she's going to blast it out there. We'll have it live on our city website as well.
I know, Lorraine, you mentioned before that people that wanted to be on it could be on it. I had somebody approach me that they had sent Aaron and Emily a request back months ago, and they were never contacted.
Okay, I'd have to look, because I, yeah, at that point.
Yeah, we can look into that. I mean, we would afford anything to you, but we can double-check tomorrow and see.
And I can give you his name also. And I can give you his name also.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's great. And I appreciate you getting that survey out, that's great. Councilman Meyer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think, first, I'd like to thank, or congratulate everybody that won the election, and all those that also ran, and thank you for all the people that participated in the election. It's my third term, and I want to go back at it again, and I hope I can get all the support from everybody in this room to get another resolution, to get, guess what? A ramp at the post office. So I'm hoping to get a resolution in support by this city council, and then by the next city council after the new year. And I'll be working with Chris Kuliszwer to help, to help me with that as well.
That's great. And if I may just interrupt your, you also pushed so hard for the sidewalk to West Cape May, and now Atlantic City Electric, the taxpayers are not paying for it, but Atlantic City Electric is. So I appreciate your pushing that.
Thank you, thank you. ADA compliance and ADA, anybody, any support for anybody that's with special needs or, or special capable, you know, we should all participate in supporting that. And also, Cape May Post Office is the only 08204 post office that has P.O. box, P.O. boxes. So, you know, they don't have them in, in lower township. So it's another incentive to say, hey, you know, I remember I got a bunch of people out to kind of do a little protest, and there was a woman that was a World War II veteran nurse, and she was in a wheelchair, and a lot, like a lot of other people, and she just can't, she fought for her country, you know, and she can't access the post office. And I just think that's a, it's, it's, it's a shame, you know, among other words. I just want to talk about my ideas. We have such a great, you know, you walk around Cape May, there's all these projects going on, and I think it'd be a great opportunity to plan how we want to frame our new historic district within a historic district, which is our, our museums, our firehouse, our, our new community center, library, museum, that, you know, the Harry Tubman House, the Stephen Smith House. I like to see Franklin Street being the sidewalks paved with bricks, or at least stamped bricks. You know, we have the, the, the bank across the street, we have the post office, and other parts of Franklin Street. I think it'd be a really great way to encompass the whole area, and maybe do a T, you know, formation out onto Lafayette Street, to kind of say, hey, you're in this special part of Cape May, and there's a lot to look at, just keep walking on the side, on the paved sidewalk. I'm also working really hard with the Shade Tree Commission, as well as our, our subcommittee about bolstering our ordinances, kind of make them strong like West Cape May is, and you know, and there's more to come with the help of the city solicitor, who's done such a great job in that town as well. And I've also, you know, as part of, a liaison of the Shade Tree Commission, we wanted to see a lot of the trees be saved as part of the paving project at the Welcome Center. And, and with their support, and with the support of the city council, I like to kind of like take the, the reins about re-beautifying that area with the Shade Tree Commission, putting some trees back in there. That's what the owners of the property wants. And an opportunity for us to kind of shade, or give a vegetation screening to the restaurant that's kind of more exposed now. And after all, we're gonna be having meters in this area, so it direct, you know, the business next door directly impacts the money that the city's gonna be making, you know, next door. And I think a little bit of money put into there to beautify it, and not make it so barren will be a big step moving forward. And I remember, Mr. Vol, you had mentioned that the bollards are gonna be painted green, just like the lamp posts. Some of those lamp posts have the new tops on top. I think a nice new coating on, on the existing poles would be needed as well as part of We had this ordinance tonight about the expedition cars, and about impounding these expedition cars. I think this is the op, the optimum direction we need to take when it comes to electric anything on, on the promenade. If you ride an electric anything on that promenade, which is happening more because we're in the off season, it's like driving an electric, a motorized vehicle. It goes just as fast and it's just as dangerous. And I think it's an opportunity for us to impound them. And I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's out of the realm to say, hey, every day, especially the nice days, there should be a police officer walking that boardwalk. And they should, they need to stand in the middle of the boardwalk, put their arms out and say, hey, you're done. This is mine. Get off the boardwalk. I think, I think it's an opportunity, you know, if, if I were to drive a moped down a boardwalk, the same thing would happen. And I, I'll continue to work with Public Works to come up with signs, and the city manager to enforce that. If you have any suggestions, city solicitor as well, I think that's the best way to go about it. If you want, if you want to ride your $1,000, $2,000 bike on your boardwalk, and you, you know, it's gonna be taken away from you. Final, also, it was mentioned by the Public Works Director that they're looking into putting some heaters in, in at least two of the restrooms on the promenade. You know, a lot of people come to Cape May, they live in lower township, Courthouse, I know a number of people, they like to walk the boardwalk. And sometimes, you know, they have to run the boardwalk because they have to find a restroom. And I think that's promoting our year-round tourism is, to support that. And finally, you know, I want to thank everybody that's participated in the Veterans Day, and I want to thank all veterans who served our country. And the final words I'll say is what I said the other day, you know, just because it's not Veterans Day, it doesn't mean you should not thank a veteran for their service. You see a person with a distinctive hat, it's your duty to thank them. If you see a veteran in need, it's your duty as an American citizen to do everything you can to help them.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
I just wanted to expand on your comment about the shade tree, that the electric company has given the city so many trees.
I forgot to mention that.
I know. And if anybody wants a tree in the front of their property, let Lou Blasco know, and he can have a tree planted for you.
50 of them.
Yeah.
50 trees, yes.
And I did have somebody reach out to me, they wanted one, possibly two, so.
Yeah, definitely. I'm, I'm a liaison too, so let me know as well.
My next comment that I wanted to make, is it all ready for me then?
Where are we at? Sorry. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry. Deputy.
My second comment has to be, has to do with the African-American report that we paid for that $44,000 for with a grant. That report hasn't been submitted yet to the state, and if it doesn't get submitted by, I think, Thanksgiving, we would lose that grant. So I just want to make sure that does get submitted in a timely manner. And that's all that I have.
Okay.
Is that December that it was supposed to be, or like?
It's, there was a target submittal by Thanksgiving. The deadline is the end of the year, they need time to review. I was actually on the phone with our grant consultant, spoke with the NJDP on Monday. Mr. Blasco's out this week, but we're on track to get that submitted, and, and we'll make sure that that's taken care of.
Okay, yeah, because I had, you know, spoken with the state, and they hadn't received it yet, and they didn't understand what the, the holdup was, that's why.
Okay. Councilman Jaeger?
No new business tonight, thank you.
Okay. I'll just quickly, I do, oh, Mr. Meyer, thank you for taking on that beautification of the Welcome Center, that kind of phase two, getting that done. I know you'll do a great job.
Thanks.
That'll be nice. Actually, I was gonna add the trees, which we could use for the Welcome Center too, by the way.
That's true.
Yeah. And, let's see. Oh, one thing I did want to, first, congratulations to everyone on their election up here, and Maureen McDate as well. And I do, on that, want to ask Council if you felt it was appropriate, I know it's been done in the past, but for the December meetings, to have Maureen join us at the table, I just wanted to, you don't have to give me an answer now, we can, we can talk about it.
I've always supported that over my time.
Okay, okay.
I think it's important.
Okay. So, like to.
And close sessions, we might, we might want to close session to kind of get up to date on some things.
Are we okay with that?
I don't know if we can until she's sworn in.
Oh, that's fine, yeah.
I don't think, yeah, okay. But, but we would like to welcome Maureen up, up to the table for our December meetings. And, and of course, I, I know, I don't know, it goes without saying, but reach out to Maureen, and, and we can bring her up to speed on everything, so. With that, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, come to the microphone, please, Bonnie?
I have a couple of questions. One is, several years ago, the gas company did their work on Washington Street. I know they did work on Columbia, and then they repaved it. And they were supposed to repave Washington too, but there's a lot of divots left on Washington Street, and I don't know, they may have been put on hold for some reason, but are we gonna fire that up? Because it's free.
How many years ago was that?
It's, it was during.
Six?
No, no, no. When was Columbia paved?
Two years, two years something.
Yeah, and they did Washington after Columbia, so. I know for sure the, the 1200 and the 1300 block is loaded with divots, and, you know, they're all the way down. I don't travel, like, your section.
I think you're saying, Bonnie, now that you're talking about this, I do think they were talking about that they were going to, and somehow they just never did.
I can remember, um.
What?
That was kind of the case with a lot of Cape May. I don't think Cape May was too, was forcefully up or followed up, you know, enough to make sure that all the roads were paved, you know. If you see, like, on Congress Street, you only see half the road paved. They were supposed to do the whole road.
Yeah.
And I just think that, it's such a long time ago that it's gonna be hard to ask for these laws.
Two years is not that long.
If, Mike, if you could look into that for Washington Street.
Yeah, it was before my time, but I'd definitely look into it tomorrow.
Okay.
Second question, I haven't heard anything about the sale of beach tags in December?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Because this is like mid-November.
Sale, you talking about the early sale?
I can comment on that, Bonnie. We just sent out the advertisement, so one should be coming out this week, and then next week as well.
Okay. With, at sale price?
Yep, at the sale price, it'll be December 1st through March 31st.
Okay, perfect. Because I know people purchase them as, as Christmas gifts, holiday gifts.
They make a wonderful stocking stuffer.
Exactly, the perfect size.
Yes, we just published through The Herald, so it should be this upcoming Wednesday, and then the following Wednesday as well.